Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock. We have a quorum present. Therefore, I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the north wall. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call for the Board of Equalization?
Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is present virtually but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present. Thank you. Item A is approval of the minutes from October 27th. Item B is calling for a meeting on November 24th. It's a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. I have a motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Morgan, to approve A and B. Questions or comments to either of these? Then could we please vote? Thank you. Citizens' comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move down to Resolutions D through H. Is there... Okay, motion by Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner Borgerson to approve Resolutions D through H. Questions or comments to any of these?
Commissioner Duda, we would just note that on item E, one of the CAC numbers on the resolution... Excuse me, it's in the backup documentation. And it says 20168, and it should be 20268. And we will correct that in the record.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, then could we please vote on the resolutions? With that friendly amendment.
All Commissioners present voting yes.
Thank you. We have a protest of certified assessment corrections for CAC 20230, Fort Street Church of Christ. Good morning, Mr. Goodwilly.
Commissioners, good morning. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. This is a continuation from a certified assessment correction that was done for this organization, the Fort Street Church of Christ, who had not bothered to file a property tax exemption application for 2020 despite a number of reminders. Subsequently, we have received an exemption application from them dated November 5th of 2020. From a technical standpoint, what they're protesting is the value we set on the property. I think what they're really asking for is for the county board to approve their exemption application.
Yes, that's it. I'm Phyllis, by the way.
Good morning. She's on Zoom. On Zoom, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning.
Phyllis, would you like to add anything to the discussion at this point?
Oh, just absolutely. Forgive me for not understanding the process here, but I've been the secretary there since 2014. It's been solely my job to take care of the business of the church. I got a job in November, December last year, and just got consumed with it and neglected many things there at the church. And that's why we're here now. So I just kind of wanted to throw myself on the mercy of you guys to understand that things happen, and we've been exempt and filed for every year that we've been a religious organization. And I just hope that this year, we can do the same in spite of my error.
Thank you, Phyllis. Commissioner Borgerson?
I would move to grant the exemption to the Fort Street Church of Christ.
Did anybody else wish to speak? Commissioner Morgan?
No.
If I might, one more thing, if I could address this to Ms. Wagner. You know, the 2021 application deadline is December 31st. So please don't miss that one, so we don't have to have this conversation next year.
Absolutely not. Be careful.
All right. And while we have a motion before us, then, further questions or comments? I'm not going to ask if we can legally support this, because I think I know the answer. Okay, I would call for the vote, please.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
We haven't voted yet.
She's cute.
Motion passes.
There you go.
There you go. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next is a presentation from Monty Bowman regarding the real property valuation protest process. Is Mr. Bowman here this morning? He's been on the agenda numerous times. Okay, I am not aware of need for executive session for Board of Equalization.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second to adjourn as the Board of Equalization. And I will call as adjourned. We don't actually have to vote on that. So we are adjourned as the Board of Equalization. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Could we please have the roll call for that?
Commissioner Borgerson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft is attending virtually but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Uh, here.
Mr. Chair?
Present. Thank you. At Commissioner Kraft's request, which was a good one, he very strongly said, "Why don't we start right off by thanking Brian Cruz, Chris Brothers, and the entire staff of the Election Commissioner's office for handling record voter turnout from all appearances without a glitch?" I mean, it could not have gone more smoothly.
And if I may comment.
Commissioner Kraft, the floor is yours.
Also, all the people who worked at the polls and all those who did the counting.
Amen.
We thank them all.
Absolutely, absolutely. This is an amazing process to go through, and we've got a lot of good people doing a lot of good work. So thank you for putting that at the forefront, Commissioner Kraft. Okay, to the agenda. Item 1A, minutes and claims, approval of minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting October 27th. Item B, approving claims for payment through November 17th. What is the will of the board?
I'll abstain.
All right. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve A and B, and Commissioner Morgan will be abstaining because a check is written out to him. Could we please vote?
Commissioner Morgan is abstaining.
Thank you. Now I'm going to exercise the chair's prerogative. I only have three meetings left. People can get as mad at me as they want, and I won't even care. This is kind of nice. I'm going to skip right to the very last item on our agenda, and this is the resolution accepting the retirement notice of Sheriff Tim Dunning effective December 31st and appointing Chief Deputy Sheriff Tom Wheeler to the position of Douglas County Sheriff to complete the remainder of Sheriff Dunning's term.
Motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Sheriff, come on, you gotta say something. This is a big deal.
Tim Dunning, Douglas County Sheriff. I've contacted everyone individually, so that wasn't a surprise to you when I sent my letter to Dan Esch, and so I would appreciate your vote for Tom Wheeler. It's been a great ride, 26 years with the sheriff's office at the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
I was gonna make a substitute motion, Sheriff Dunning, that we lay this over.
Can you give me a break on the last day?
Only another 180 days.
Pardon?
Only for 180 days, but I've decided, because of your statement, I'll defer that.
Thank you. Been a great board to work with. You know, I've had issues here and there, just like you've had issues with me here and there, but overall, it's been a great experience, and I thank you for your cooperation.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, it does sadden me that you made that call, because you have been a great sheriff, and representing much of western Douglas County, I know that because I see the work that you all do in cooperation with our smaller communities out there, and they have a lot of respect for you and for the office and for our deputies.
Thank you.
But I do support your request in supporting Chief Deputy Tom Wheeler as interim sheriff. He as well has shown the high level of professionalism and work ethic that we need to take over once you exit at the end of the year. But sad to see you go. I understand why you're doing it. I wish you the best of luck, and I know we'll see you again before December, but good luck.
I think Joe Lorenz will especially be happy because he's kept us under budget all these years. That's also been a great working relationship.
That's right.
Tim, as the only Commissioner who predates you...
Yeah.
You know, I still remember when you came in as a candidate to meet me, talking about thinking of running for Douglas County Sheriff. I have been able to witness the increase in professionalism and the improvements in attitude from my end of exposure to the sheriff's office. I have to tip my hat to what I think has been a very impressive 26-year run that you have had. I have been a fan of yours since you first ran for office. I did what I could to help you get in. I've been impressed with what I think has been quantum leaps forward in the professionalism and development of the sheriff's office, and I have nothing but a world of respect for you as you write off into the sunset.
Well, thank you, and I couldn't have gotten anything accomplished without the approval of a variety of things over the years from the county board, so you all helped make that happen, as did all the men and women.
Very good. Further comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Tim, I want to commend you on a stellar career of public service. We go back to when you were an upperclassman at Creighton Prep, and I might know you longer than anybody here.
Yeah, I was calculating that this morning, and I think you graduated in '68, right?
That's right.
So we've known each other a little over 50 years.
There you go. In all that time...
That hasn't always been good, Jim.
In all that time, from the time we spent in Jugg together back in the '60s till now, I've watched your career. You know, when I was a public defender and you were on the OPD, we had cases together. And as sheriff, I've interacted with you on the merit commission and on other issues. And I got to say, congratulations on a great career of public service. Your contribution to the community is unmatched, and what you've done for public safety and law enforcement here will stand the test of time. The fact that you're a Republican and I'm a Democrat has never played the slightest part in any of our dealings, and I think that's a credit to the fact that you just did the job. There's no way to be a Democrat or Republican county sheriff. There's just a way to get the job done.
Yeah, after I... After I was elected in '84, Tom Doyle kind of pulled me aside and says, you know, "You're not just a Republican, you're the sheriff now for all the people." And I've kind of kept that conversation in mind all my years, is that there's a time for that, to, you know, I guess what's the cliche? Elections are like war, and the war is over, and now it's time to be everybody's sheriff because you got votes from both sides. So that's exactly right. I've tried not to be to one side.
You certainly lived up to that ideal, and I got to say, you also lived up to the ideal that the Jesuits instilled in us all those years ago, that you've been a man for others throughout your life, and your contribution to our community and the public safety of our community is really a tribute to living that ethic that we were taught all those years ago at Creighton Prep. So thanks again, and good luck in whatever you're on to do now. I envy you. You're my hero. Thanks.
Thank you.
Further comments?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, then I would go ahead and call for the vote, if we could, please.
And this, Mr. Chairman, includes the appointment?
This is the appointment of Tom Wheeler. Yes. Thank you, Tim, and wish you well, Tom. Look forward to seeing you now fill the shoes.
Thank you.
We will come back now to the consent agenda, where we find items A through O. Is it O?
No, I mean... It's approved.
Oh, it's A through R. Excuse me. Even longer than I thought. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments to anything on the agenda? Is there any item anybody would like pulled out for individual attention? Okay, then I would call for the vote on the consent agenda.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. The Hidden Heroes, I believe we're planning on that at 10 o'clock, is that Commissioner Borgerson has some guests that will be joining us via Zoom, and they are planning on doing that at 10 o'clock, and so we will...
Yeah, I think we're missing one who might be coming in at 9:30, but...
You let me know at any time, whenever you feel ready to go for that. But until then, we'll keep moving down the agenda. Next, we have citizens' comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners with any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move down to presentations and CARES Act update. Good morning, Joe Lorenz.
Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director. Today, for the CARES Act update, we have a few items. The first one is the discussion, which action can be taken on to increase the maximum payment allowance for individuals for utility assistance to increase it from $750 to $1,200. And there are some people from MUD and OPPD who, you know, if they want to speak now, or do you want the guys want to say anything?
I would move to approve them for bringing that increase to the administration to use those dollars wisely, so thank you.
And I think this will help us, you know, we have $4 million allocated, and I think this will help us get a lot closer to using more of that money.
All right, I will second Commissioner Borgerson's motion to approve item A1. Questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just want to add my thumbs up to that increase. In our most recent HHS hearing, we had reports relative to the progress towards spending all the $4 million, and it's going to be a challenge to get it all out there to people by the end of the year, but this is a big step in the right direction. And I want to commend our partners at OPPD and MUD for stepping up and helping our community, and the folks at Dollar Energy as well for their stellar job in administering this program. And I think we have representatives from all three organizations here today. I just would like to follow up with one thing, that I'm getting inquiries or requests from constituents relative to applications and whatever, so if I reach out to you about one of those, you know, please try to get back to me so that we can serve as many people as possible. But so far, so good. I think, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that of the $4 million, the last report was, how much has actually been delivered?
I think it were right about $1,007,007, based on the latest report, which I just got this morning.
Okay. And, you know, running into the end of the year, we discussed this at the hearing, there's going to be kind of a cutoff date before December 31st to allow applications to be processed and determined. What's the absolute last day that people probably can apply for energy assistance in 2020 and get it?
I think the last day to apply is somewhere, we haven't said it exactly, but I think it's right around December 15th.
Okay. So it's important that people know that, and I think that'll be going up on all of our sites, but if the utilities and energy, Dollar Energy can help us with that as well. We want people to know it's available now. We've increased the amount, and I think it's retroactive relative to the increase as well as it has been with the overall grant. So going back, if you had an unmet need, even if you had received a partial payment before, you could go for a supplemental payment for your unmet need.
Right, so this would give people $450 more.
Yeah, great. So thanks, everybody. Good job, and let's keep it up and keep people's lights and gas and water on for the holidays. Thank you.
Further comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one. This is just on the energy assistance question?
Correct.
Just on number one?
A1, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Item A2, final local government funding requests for Rolston Valley, Boyz Town, Bennington, Waterloo, Pocahill Hills, and Irvington, 2.7 million.
Rolston, approved.
Yeah, maybe I'll just fill this one in a little bit. You know, we were here a couple of weeks ago with this, and we had, you know, approved some things, some of the departments, but then we also went back and confirmed some numbers, trying, you know, explained the idea of presumptive salaries to some of the smaller municipalities. And we searched out all the local volunteer fire departments, so we got everybody to come in with an application, and we ran it by Deloitte, and they're in agreement that this would all pass. So, you know, I think we handed out what each of the individual groups are now, and they sum up to $2,711,820. And this, you know, would go against the money that was set aside for local governments within the CARES Act pool. And so, like I say, these have been signed off by Deloitte, so if the Commissioners would approve this today, the next step is just for them to reach an agreement that they would work on with the county attorney's office, and when they reach that agreement, we can cut them a check for the amount of money listed for each entity. So that's where we are in local government.
I appreciate that. We had a... Did we have a motion? Did we have a second? Okay, motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Rogers. I will be abstaining as an active member of the Pocahill hills volunteer fire department. It is probably inappropriate for me to participate in this vote. Probably. Okay, questions or comments to this motion? Mr. Chair? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Joe, I see that these entities have various requests that we're funding here. Between now and the end of the year, it looks like we might have unexpended balances on the CARES Act overall. Would it be possible for municipalities in Douglas County to come in for some supplemental funding on requests that we weren't able to meet in the first go-round?
I, you know, I think that's if the Commissioner, if we have some money left over, which it looks like we may have a bit, you know, we won't have huge amounts, but if there's money left over, then that's really up to the Commissioners to decide how they want to allocate that money.
Right. And I think our discussions so far have been for unexpended amounts at the end of the year to do some type of a lapse into the county's general fund.
That's correct.
And there's been, I think, a finding by you and Patrick and Deloitte that funding Correct me on this terminology, but funding for first responder and health personnel costs is...
Public safety and public health.
That's something that other entities, like municipalities in Douglas County, might have as well, is it not?
They, for these, it would... What we've been mirroring, mirroring what the state does, and what the state allowed was three months of public health and public safety salaries. And for these municipalities, it's really, since they're volunteer fire departments, it's not the fire, so it's the police. So these groups, when you see the numbers under municipal, the big determinant of most of those are police salaries for three months. You know, we, like I say, we have been doing exactly what the state has been doing, but within the actual terms of the CARES Act, the municipal salaries for all 10, you know, for public health and public safety for all 10 months are eligible. So it would be, you know, whatever the Commissioners, how they want to treat that.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions to the motion? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Duda abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Item 3, approval of amendment to the CARES Act funding agreement with Omaha Community Foundation to allow the Community Foundation to use its remaining CARES Act allocation as stimulus payments and to allocate an additional $8 million in CARES Act funding to the Omaha Community Foundation for that purpose.
Yeah, I see Donna Kutsch is here, so I'm actually going to ask her to come up, and if you all have any questions, she can speak to it.
Fine. We have a motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Rogers. So what? Commissioner Morgan?
Donna, I just want to really express a real big thank you to what the Community Foundation has done, and your leadership and your team that's worked on this. I've had really positive comments, and you've been a great asset for us. I've had really positive comments, and you've been a great asset for us in helping us with the CARES money, and thank you very much for the time you've spent.
Thank you. Donna Kutsch, Omaha Community Foundation, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Commissioner?
Thank you. What this, in my mind, what we're doing here today is taking basically the last of our unallocated CARES Act funding and saying, what, how can we do the most good with this funding, with this money that's available? And we've looked at all the programs that we've gotten going and everything, and which one has the capacity and the effectiveness that seems like a good fit? And you were it. I mean, when I talked to you about saying, what, how could you effectively use another $8 million, you said all the right things. And so I am excited that, to me, this represents our last major investment of CARES Act dollars, getting them out, doing what they were intended to do. What, where do you see the $8 million going? Where do you see it being used?
Sure, yes, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, it would go to help fund those shortfalls that we have in our nonprofit community. More specifically, we have 222 nonprofits who applied already in our stimulus program, and so we would add this incremental amount to that pool to help support the stimulus. The reason the stimulus is so important, too, is that during Phase One of our grant making, we were only able to help cover expenses, and that really only helped the larger organizations who had bigger expenses. This is going to really help our smaller nonprofits. It's really going to help them get by. They had PPP, you know, they've had some assistance from the state, and this is really going to help them continue for the next few months until hopefully there's another package or things to improve in our economy. But those smaller organizations especially will greatly need this impact, and this is going to help them a lot.
Very good, thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this, and thank you for the great job that you and Omaha Community Foundation have been doing and helping us get these dollars into the accounts of people who need it in our nonprofit community. And I think you've touched on why we're doing this. This is a supplement to what we've done before for not-for-profits, large and small, in our community, to help them bridge the period between now and the end of the year. The original grants from us to you and then you onto the sub-sub recipients have hold harmless agreements that are mirrored in this new addendum, is that correct? I looked through it and I think that's right.
Yes, yeah, they would be the, these are amendments to the existing agreement, which does have the hold harmless in it, yes.
Okay. And I know that we've looked at this, and time is short, and, you know, we've had this discussion about what more we could do in our community, and we're all aware of the fact that, in addition to the not-for-profit community, we have big sections of our for-profit community, particularly in the area of entertainment and hospitality, food and beverage, that are massively impacted by, probably more so than any other sector of our economy, by COVID-19. And we'd like to get them some help. But, you know, the devil's in the details here, and getting the administrative structure up and in place to allow that is a challenge that we might not be able to fully meet by the end of the year, is that right?
That is correct, that is very true.
And so, looking into '21, this is for the folks that are listening in and watching us, we hope to expand this into giving aid to those portions of our community for profit, a lot of them mom and pops, locally owned businesses that are severely impacted by COVID-19.
Correct, yes, yeah, if there's another package that would produce new funding in 2021, we've already had discussions, you know, typically at the community foundation, we deal mostly with nonprofits, but we had gone pretty far down the road in exploring how we could help for-profits. We have seen that happen in other communities across the U.S., and we had gotten a lot of information from the other community foundations on how to go about that and partner, and it would most likely be a partnership with some other entities in, to help us get that done, to help provide, especially to the hospitality, small business area.
And that's great. I mean, you know, when we're handing out these monies, it's important not to forget the fact that these small businesses that you're talking about, the privately owned, locally owned, are taxpayers. They pay property tax, they pay restaurant tax, they pay sales tax, and they are really, really stressed. I mean, we see business after business going out of business almost on a daily basis. And, you know, I think it's just important for folks out there to know that hopefully, if Washington acts in 2021 and we get a second CARES Act, help is on the way. That's our intent anyhow, we hope to get that in 2021.
Yes.
So thank you for what you've done, and we look forward to working in the new year. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I don't recall the board talking about that full-throatedly in any way, but I just want to say to the public, I don't, I don't want to be on record as promising that, because nobody knows how the federal government is going to outlay that money. I guarantee you, there's going to be a big brouhaha from the National League of Cities about how this money was cut when it came to the county, so you don't, you don't know how this is going to go, and I just want to be on record as saying, I've gotten several calls from businesses in my community, and my answer to them has been that the state should probably take the lead with that, because our money is a drop in the bucket to that need, and they put that out there. But I just want to be sure that, you know, I don't recall that, I definitely understand the need, but I don't want people thinking that this is a promise that's going to flow like that, because the Fed hasn't even cut the deal yet.
Yes, yeah, I think that's a very good point. Yeah, we will be prepared if we are given the opportunity.
I would, I would like to add to this action that we're looking at today, not something that may happen down the road. A couple of the other things that I'm hoping you'll have opportunity to address with this, and you mentioned in our conversation that you would touch base with Brian Barks of the food bank to make, to see what gaps there may be anywhere in the local food chain?
Yes.
Really appreciate that. What, we also had discussed, and I know you deal traditionally only with not-for-profits, but we talked about maybe some live music venues or something, that there might be a chance that we could try to get them a little bit of help out of this package.
Correct, small, small venues who, and really, who, we see this as a natural extension of what we're already assisting with in arts, culture, and entertainment, that these other performing venues are a nice, natural extension of that group, and there are about eight of them in that, that fit that definition, and that definition is really with 50% or less of their revenues being in food and beverage. So, in other words, you know, 50% or more of their, of their revenues is in ticket sales and promotions and things like that. So that is, is how we define those, those live venues, those entertainment venues. And again, we see those as a natural extension of what we're already doing in the arts and entertainment area.
Very good. Well, you've been such a great partner to work with, that it's just such a natural fit. If we have a little more opportunity to invest some, that we do it with you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments to the motion before us? All right, Louise?
Louise Humannis, 3306 Burt Street. I've been listening on the section, on this section about the new additional $800 million in CARES Act fund.
Eight million.
Excuse me. I thought we were the state. Eight million in CARES Act funding to OCF. And I thought it occurred to me that, is this money, the $8 million, considered spent when it's given to OCF? Because of the December 31st deadline of the money being, having to be spent?
It's, their challenge is to distribute as much of this as they can in that timeframe.
And then they have to return what isn't spent?
Presumably, and we haven't quite figured out all the exit details yet. I still think we're probably going to end up having to have a special meeting on December 30th or 31st, myself. We're still talking to the county attorney. I don't know how, how the end game will look. We have all said, and I think we all believe, we don't want to send a nickel back to Washington. We are all in agreement on that, and whatever it takes to help us achieve that. And I think it's probably going to be a last meeting at the end of the year, but that's, that's really kind of a different subject than, than this one.
Commissioner Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. I don't think we're going to need a meeting at the end of the year, because what we're going to do is bring a resolution before this board, either on the 24th or possibly the first meeting in December, which will say that any unspent funds that are returned to the county will be captured through our payroll, public safety and public health, and we can do that in advance.
Fine.
So, and then to the other question regarding Tracy's speech, this is stimulus funds, that's, that's more flexible than the, than the funds for what we gave them for the $20 million originally. So I believe that with the stimulus funds, once you give it to them, it's considered spent. But Tracy can clarify that if she wants to.
Yeah, if they don't allocate all of it, it would be left over, but they are welcome to allocate all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, Tracy York County Attorney's Office. And so I'll direct your attention to the amendment, and I should have brought it up with me, so now I'm doing this from memory, but if you look at the amendment, I think it's on the last page, and it requires that OCF return any unspent funds by December 22nd. And so they do have, the allocation to OCF is not considered spent. It would be when OCF goes ahead and distributes that money. And so should they have money that they don't spend, don't disperse, they're required to give that back to the county by December 22nd. With that, idea being that this board will pass a resolution, perhaps at the December meeting, as Patrick said, and perhaps authorize Joe Lorenz to do all things necessary, make appropriate journal entries and things of that nature, to then go ahead and repurpose that money. So, but that's what, that's what will happen, is that money will come back.
Good, thank you.
So what I understand is that not, the money is considered spent until the people that receive the money spend it for that purpose, and all the money that isn't spent comes back, and the county's going to repurpose it so that we don't, so we are considered fully spent on the CARES Act funding?
Yes, yes. Yes, I would say that's accurate. Okay, further questions, comments to the motion? All right, then I would call for the vote on allocating $8 million to the Omaha Community Foundation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you voting yes on this item? We accidentally stopped the vote too early. So we will reflect the yes vote for Commissioner Kavanaugh, so the motion passes with six yes votes. Commissioner Boyle has arrived at the meeting, so he's voting now. You're here.
She's just celebrating your presence. And if you ever wonder about how to do these votes, Brian Cruz has a little more free time now and could probably give you some free coaching. I would bring us back in the agenda now to the resolution recognizing Douglas County as a Hidden Heroes County through the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, supporting military and veteran caregivers in Douglas County, and with that, I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Burgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm very excited to bring this resolution forward to us today for consideration. As you know, county leaders are committed to our country's servicemen and women, the veterans, and their families. And we have about 37% of counties have veterans representing more than 10% of adult population, and that includes Douglas County. County governments provide a wide range of services for these valued members of our communities. Here in Douglas County, along with many counties across our nation, we have a Department of Veteran Service Affairs and a County Veteran Service Office. These important entities work to ensure that our veterans have access to education and employment assistance, healthcare, and social services, and for those who are most vulnerable, counties offer vital housing and mental health supports and strengthened connections to social networks. As counties, we also represent the spouses, the parents, and the other loved ones caring for our nation's wounded warriors. We must do more to support them, though. We must raise awareness of the issues caregivers confront every day and lift up their personal stories. As a caregiver for my father, who passed away in February of this year, and also for my mother, who currently suffers from Alzheimer's dementia, I deeply relate to the challenges that this community of caregivers face. And that is why I'm especially grateful to the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and our partnership through this Hidden Heroes City and Counties Program, which has a growing network of cities and counties dedicated to streamlining services for our military caregivers and sharing best practices among leaders. I had the distinct honor of speaking at the first Hidden Heroes City-County Summit, October 7th. The summit brought together city and county leaders and nonprofit community partners to discuss the effective strategies for supporting military caregivers in local communities, not only here but across the U.S. And that's where I learned that the state of Nebraska is actually a Hidden Heroes state. And I felt that it was a perfect fit for Douglas County to become a Douglas County Hidden Heroes County, and that's why I bring this resolution forward to you today. And now to tell us more about this program, I have asked Andrea Dorsey, who is the Nebraska representative for the Dole Foundation, Yasmin Alfonso, who's the manager of the City and Communities Initiative for the Dole Foundation, and Dean Mathison from the Deputy District Director's Congressman Bacon's office, all to say a few words about this. And I'm very pleasantly surprised to see Andrea actually here in person. I thought she was going to be on Zoom, so come on down, Andrea. And I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Well, thank you. Take mask off or on?
Your choice, your.
Okay. All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Take a minute here. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Andrea Dorsey, and I'm honored to be part of this special occasion, and I'm proud to represent the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and military caregivers in Nebraska and beyond. I'd like to thank the support, thank, thank the Douglas County Board for pledging your support for military and veteran caregivers in our county by signing on as a Hidden Heroes County. I can't tell you how much this means to me and my fellow caregivers. Although our stories are different, many of our experiences and challenges are similar. I'd also like to thank Congressman Bacon and his staff for their continued support and advocacy for service members, veterans, and their families. Caregivers are spouses, parents, siblings, and other loved ones who voluntarily provide around-the-clock care to America's wounded warriors at home. It is the spouse that ensures appointments are made and medications are taken, the mother who stands beside her son as he learns to walk again, and the children who know to pick up their toys so Dad's wheelchair can get through. The loved ones whom they care for may have physical injuries, such as lost limbs or amputations, or invisible wounds that cannot be seen, such as traumatic stress disorder or a traumatic brain injury. Caregivers have a host of responsibilities that may include managing medication, assisting in wound care, dressing, bathing, coordinating medical appointments, providing physical and emotional support, monitoring environmental triggers, assisting with other daily activities of daily life, and so much more. In most cases, military caregivers do all this while assuming responsibility for the entire household, cooking, cleaning, child rearing, and paying the bills. Caregiving is a full-time job, and I can tell you, it can be mentally, physically, and emotionally draining. For me, my caregiving journey began many years ago, when my husband Joe was injured by an IED explosion while serving with the U.S. Army in Iraq. Sorry. He returned home with post-traumatic stress disorders, sleep disorders, and head and neck, and neck and back injuries that have progressively, progressively worsened over the years. As Joe's wife and caregiver, it is my responsibility to help him cope with the everlasting wounds of war and advocate for his care. I am incredibly proud of his never-ending strength, positive attitude, and his commitment to helping other veterans and their families. Senator Elizabeth Dole shares a similar story. When her husband Bob Dole was admitted to Walter Reed When her husband Bob Dole was admitted to Walter Reed Medical Center for 11 months in 2011, she experienced firsthand the tremendous challenges facing the loved ones of our nation's wounded, ill, and injured warriors. This experience inspired her to establish the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and commission the RAND Corporation to conduct the first national comprehensive, evidence-based study of military and veteran caregivers. The research revealed that there are more than 5.5 million military caregivers in the United States. These caregivers drop everything to care for their wounded service members and veterans at home, and they are proud to do it. However, in most cases, caregivers begin this journey in total isolation and without any support. At the foundation and through the Hidden Heroes Campaign chaired by Tom Hanks, our goal is to shine a bright light on our nation's military caregivers by empowering them, honoring them, and providing them with the resources and support they need and deserve. And today, I feel so fortunate that Douglas County is joining the state of Nebraska, the foundation, and 155 other Hidden Heroes counties, cities, and states across the nation in this important initiative. As a caregiver, I can tell you just how life-changing community support can be. I have met so many amazing people who are able to lend support to our family. My family's hope is that through our work with the foundation, we can advocate for military families, connect them with available resources, and most importantly, let them know that they do not have to walk this path alone. The needs of military caregivers vary from state to state and community to community. But with the support of the foundation and commitment from our community leaders, we can pinpoint those needs and find solutions to the challenges facing the Hidden Heroes right here in Douglas County. Our nation's caregivers are serving our country with the same honor and duty our loved ones demonstrated in volunteering to defend our freedom. And it is time that our communities embrace them and provide them the support and recognition they deserve. My hope for today's Douglas County proclamation is that other cities and counties across the great state of Nebraska join the Hidden Heroes Cities and Counties Initiative led by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and join the other 155 cities, counties, and four states that have signed on to the Hidden Heroes pledge, passing resolutions to recognize, support, and engage military and veteran caregivers in our communities. As the Dole Caregiver Fellow representing our state, I can't wait to work with each community to reach and recognize caregivers for our unique vital service to our nation. Finally, as we celebrate the county signing on, I encourage you to reach out to the caregivers in your life. Take a moment to show your support and let them know how much you appreciate all that they do. Thank you.
I would ask at this time if Yasmin had any comments she would like to make.
Hi, this is Jasmine Alfonso, the manager of City and Community Initiatives with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. I just want to echo Andrea Dorsey. Thank you so much to Douglas County for bringing us to the floor today. We are so thrilled to hear about your support. The state of Nebraska has already been a tremendous supporter of the Hidden Heroes Initiative through creating a website for on nebraska.gov/hiddenheroes that has all the resources military and veteran caregivers need to establishing new initiatives throughout the year and to working closely with myself and the Nebraska Fellow Andrea Dorsey, who just spoke. I just want to thank you so much for taking the time today. Andrea, thank you for being there in person and representing all the caregivers within Nebraska and within the country. Commissioner Borgeson, thank you so much for your mention of speaking at the Hidden Heroes Cities and Counties Summit. We appreciate your support in pushing this initiative forward and as well as continuing that support of Hidden Heroes across the U.S. I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has, as well as any questions that Andrea can answer for you. But thank you so much for your time and for bringing us to the floor today.
Thank you so much for being with us. And Dean has a special message from our Congressman Don Bacon, who would have loved to have been here in person, but we couldn't get the schedules to work. So, Dean?
Commissioner, thank you very much. And other Commissioners, Congressman Bacon sends his regrets. He asked me to read this letter to you. Dear Commissioners, as a 30-year Air Force veteran and a retired Brigadier General, I have seen firsthand the cost of war and have witnessed many fellow soldiers lose so much. It is imperative that our nation, state, and communities provide the proper care and assistance to our American heroes when they return home from war. I salute and thank the millions of military and veteran caregivers, especially those working with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation's Hidden Heroes Campaign. I applaud the foundation for raising awareness on the struggles of the military caregivers and inspiring individuals, businesses, and local organizations to support our military members for years to come. One such individual, Andrea Dorsey, I met in January of 2019 and have learned a great deal from her about the issues before caregivers. Andrea also taught me how the Dole Foundation looks to provide resources, information, and also to help caregivers so they do not feel alone. Governor Pete Ricketts recently designated Nebraska as a Hidden Heroes state, only the fourth such state in the nation. Your pending resolution would honor the sacrifice, dedication, countless hours, and loving support local caregivers give to their service members through an incredible partnership with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. Caregivers are the hidden heroes, valiantly and quietly standing ready to help. Your resolution follows the state lead to continue to increase the awareness of, advance the assistance of, provide support for, and to let caregivers know they are not alone. Thank you, Commissioners, for your consideration of this resolution and to all those involved in the planning process and execution. My fellow Nebraskans and I commit to supporting our nation's military members and veterans and seeing this mission through. Sincerely, Don Bacon, Congressman, Nebraska's 2nd Congressional District, retired Brigadier General, United States Air Force, retired. And thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And be sure to express our thank yous to the Congressman for that beautiful letter. We also have with us one of the key persons who will be so important in carrying out the initiatives of the Hidden Heroes, being a Hidden Heroes county, is Benson, who is our Veteran Service Officer for our Veteran Service Department. And Benson, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to say a few words, I'd like to give you the floor to do so.
Sir, thank you, Commissioner. I'd just say this is a great opportunity. I look forward to working with Andrea here locally and to push this program forward. We have a lot of Hidden Heroes that are in our community. And we want to bring the resources and the personnel to bear so they can get the support they need to care for their veterans and our veterans. I'm just grateful to be a part of it, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Benson. And of course, you know, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I thought it was just perfect timing to bring this forward to the board today. And again, Andrea, I'm sure we'll get to know each other quite well.
I hope so.
But I so appreciate you being here. And I appreciate the work you and Jasmine do for the Dole Foundation and thank the Dole Foundation for actually creating this important program through their foundation. So, with that, Mr. Chair, that's the end of the presentation.
Very good.
And I would move approval of the resolution.
I will second that. We have some more comments, I believe. Commissioner Boyle?
I'm glad I didn't miss this. I got late, had some, helping some grandchildren, had a granddaughter. But this is really a very impressive, I'm really, Mrs. Dorsey, I think it's really terrific. And as we come up on Veterans Day commemorating it, it's just perfect timing, you know, and you've got the right activist working here with you, Commissioner Borgeson. She really delivers, she has a heart of gold, and she knows what's important. This issue needs to stay on the front burner every day. There's so many people, caregivers, not only for veterans, but also all people that are ill and so forth. But particularly, this is a real high calling. I mean, it's something that you didn't sign up for, and you've accepted it. And with grace, I might add. So, I really congratulate you and let you know that we'll be thinking of you every day when we come here. Maybe we should add something when we begin the county board meeting to remember our men and women in service who served our country. And I think we ought to probably add that when we do the Pledge of Legions. It'd be nice to kind of just make that mention. So, you'll know we're remembering you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Further comments? I too want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. Entirely appropriate, and both my sons are U.S. Army and all that. This is a big deal to me, so I very much appreciate the attention this is bringing. Further questions or comments? Then I would go ahead and call for the vote.
Motion passes, all Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Yes. You know, last time I saw Dean, he didn't have white hair, but he could probably say the same thing about me. I didn't recognize him right at first. So, okay. Thank you. We move now to the public hearings portion of the agenda. Item 6A, Consideration of Special Use Permit to Allow for the Extraction of Sand and Gravel. Then it describes the legal address, 3505 South 264th Street. Martin Marietta is the applicant. Doug Cook from our Environmental Services.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Cook, your Douglas County Planner. So, the planning commission met on October 14th, and we had six members physically present. This first item, as the chairman mentioned, is a special use permit for Martin Marietta. We are out just south of the corner of West Center Road and 264th Street. You know, that's a very popular intersection. There's a convenience store there, there's Two Rivers Storage there, and there's an existing quarry operation there. So, what Martin Marietta would like to do is expand their operation onto the south of that existing operation, on about 160 acres. So, the comp plan shows that the property is designated agricultural and also resource extraction. The blue circle there shows the two parcels equalling 160 acres. Here is the existing operation. This is on about 240 acres, and that was approved with a special use permit in 2005 with no conditions. There's also, here again where the circle is, is a proposed operation. These bunch of squares and rectangles up here, this is an extraction operation that was approved by us in 2017. So, the county engineer's office has submitted a letter with three points they would like to, the applicant to be aware of. Those have been sent to the applicant, they agree with those. So, the planning commission recommended unanimous approval of this special use permit with the condition that the county engineer letter be followed and ask that you concur with that unanimous recommendation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? Is there anybody that would like to address this board during this public hearing? Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Neil Grant with Martin Marietta Materials. We concur with the recommendation for approval, and we would ask for your formal approval. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Appreciate your being here, thank you. Nobody's called me honorable in a long time, got my attention. Okay, questions or comments to the motion before us? Okay, in seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle to approve item 6A. Questions or comments to the motion? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes, all Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your being down here today. Item 6B, the second public hearing this morning, adoption of a text change to the zoning regulations, supplemental use regulations, industrial use, on resource extraction to delete the following phrase, "Except that the notification distance shall be 300 feet." Douglas County Environmental Services applicant. Doug, what are we doing?
Okay, so you might recall that here a few months ago, we adopted our new zoning regs, a massive revision. And part of that was, is consistently throughout the zoning and subdivision regulations, neighbors are notified within a quarter mile. This is one that just slipped through the cracks, where it actually narrows that down to 300 feet. For consistency, simplicity's sake, this is a cleanup item. By taking this phrase out, it defaults to the special use permit regulations generally, which require adjacent property owners are notified within a quarter mile. So, don't read that, that we're not notifying everyone. It's just getting that conflict out of there, and we're notifying everyone within a quarter mile. So, the planning commission concurred with our recommendation unanimously and asks that you concur with their approval.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public? I'll be surprised, but would anybody care to? Oh, surprise me. This is the opportunity for input.
We's humanness, 3306 Burt Street. I'd just like to be on the record that I support cleaning it up where there is notice at a quarter mile and at a short distance of 300 feet. Overall, sending notices so people are informed prior to the fact is good because then people don't feel left out. And we, local government, I think, needs to have that as a priority for the sake of the experience for people. But I'm just saying that in light of the change today. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments during the public hearing? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. What? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle to approve item 6B. If there are no further questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes, all Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Item C, our third and final public hearing of the morning, is on discussion and possible action on a new building permit fee schedule. And again, Doug?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, our building permit fees were last looked at and revised in 2009. And staff is proposing some changes since that's 10 years or so ago. So, back in 2018, Sarpy County did the same thing. And they had contacted us and a number of different communities, and they... So, there was no need for me to re-contact all these different communities as to what their fees are. So, the changes that we're proposing are this. Right now, on a new house, we charge $75 a square foot. According to national standards, using the Nebraska multiplier, it should be 83 bucks a square foot. So, those few dollars over 10 years would seem to be fairly reasonable. Currently, we charge attached, excuse me, frame garages and block garages at different rates. We're proposing to lower that. So, instead of 18 or 21, an attached garage is valued at $15 a square foot. We currently do not charge for an unfinished basement. In my conversations with the inspectors, they do spend a lot of time inspecting a basement, an unfinished basement. There's mechanical down there, there typically is plumbing, of course, there's electrical. So, we are proposing a rate of $22 a square foot. And then a covered patio, we currently charge at 18. We're proposing to lower that to 15. Now, we're not changing everything. Here's a list of projects that you need permits for. We're proposing no changes at all. So, pole barns, sheds, detached garages, decks, fences, additions, remodels, commercial or industrial buildings. We ask the applicant the cost of the project, and the permit fee is based upon the valuation that they provide to us. We've been doing that for years and years. We're not proposing that to be changed at all this year. Right now, our electrical permit is a standard 60 bucks. And we are proposing to change that to $6 a square foot. And this is the rate that Omaha uses. A temp pole charge of 25 and a pre-connect charge of 25 is also what Omaha uses. A plumbing permit, we charge a flat $40. And let me tell you, we can't send an inspector out there for $40. The county's losing money. So, instead of a flat fee, because their time at a site is based upon how many fixtures there are because they have to look at each fix- because they have to look at each fixture, we're proposing to charge $8 a fixture, which is generally similar to Omaha, except Omaha has a list of all these different things, but generally, it's around $8. For a lawn sprinkler, we are proposing a flat $40. Mechanical permit, $40 per opening. So, you have a furnace and air conditioner, it's 40 bucks. A water heater, 10 bucks, and a furnace or AC unit would be 20. Ooh, Karen, how do I get rid of? Let me just click that off of there. There we go, okay. So, here again, three things we're not proposing to change. Right now, we charge a flat $100 for a roofing permit, we're not proposing to change that. For swimming pools, it's 50 bucks for an above-ground and 150 bucks for an in-ground pool. No changes there. And I will tell you, an interesting thing about the virus and how it has impacted building permits. We have never issued as many in-ground pool permits this last year, like we have this last year. And I think it's, and fences, you will not believe the number of fence permits, and I think it's because people are stuck at home, and they don't want their neighbors to know what they're doing, and the public pools are closed, so they're going to build their own private pool. I mean, we're still issuing pool permits, and we're in the middle of November. So, it's just amazing, it's amazing. And then, oh goodness grief, there we go. Okay, so, I wanted to give you kind of an idea as to what other communities are doing. So, what we did is we took a two-story new home that has four bedrooms, three baths, a partially finished basement, a garage, and a covered patio. And this will include building and accessory permits. So, right now, our fee would be $2,130. With the proposed changes, it would jump up to 2,089. I have below listed what other communities are doing. And if you look, if you throw Omaha's number out, and I'll tell you why that one is so low, that we would be in line with our other communities. Now, believe me, we're not doing this just to be in line with other communities. We're doing this to cover our costs. So, the planning commission did recommend in favor of these proposed changes, and asked that you concur with those changes, with these revisions.
Thank you, Doug. As somebody who's just building a new house, I shudder at seeing all these figures. But I have a question for you. Early on, on one of the charts you showed, it said, it said it was at $83 a square foot, and I can't understand.
Yeah, it was the first one.
There. I mean, how can that? So, a 2,000 square foot house would be $166,000 for a building permit, the way I read it. And I don't think that's right, I hope it's not right.
No, no, no. What that, $83 a square foot, helps to determine the valuation, and then the valuation goes to another chart in which we have, well, between 1,000 and 5,000, it's a certain amount.
Okay, fine, okay. So, all right, all right, thank you. That helps me understand a little better.
No, six cents.
Six cents, okay.
Six cents a square foot on electrical.
All right. Yeah, that seems more, that I can understand.
My boss thought it should be $6 a square foot. Oh, maybe I did say that.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
All right.
I apologize.
Further questions or comments? Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Doug and Kent. Can you explain your last comment when you said that this would help you break even on the cost, or cover our costs?
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit? So, like, the budget of our inspectors, is that what you're trying to cover with these increases?
And myself, the planning person.
Okay, so, just, you don't happen to have that data with you, do you?
Did not go in that much into the weeds, but I will tell you that since the virus now each, well, in the past, the inspectors rode together in the same vehicle. Well, because of the virus now, they are each in separate vehicles. So, that is a cost. We also, and this was approved with the zoning revisions, we now do stormwater inspections. We have a person that goes out and verifies that a silt fence is put up, and so that's a trip. And then, we have been since 2015 under a program called Acela for building permits, which is the same thing that the city is under, and there is a license fee and so forth for that. So, those are probably the three main reasons.
So, I guess what I'm interested in is if you could actually lay that out in terms of what your costs are and what we're capturing from these fees, that would be of interest to me, and to the board, you can bring it to the board. But I just want to see, with that comment, I want to see if we are breaking even, or if we are over, under, whatever.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this. Following up on that, this goes to, I guess you would call it a fiscal note, and this came up last week when we talked about, the last meeting, when we talked about adjusting the fees at the landfill. It's important that we know if we are approving this, and I think we probably will, what's the fiscal impact? I mean, what I asked for, and I don't think I've received yet on the increase in the landfill fees, was where are we now, what does that generate now? Same question here. And where do we go when we step up these fees? That's commonly accepted best practices in government, and I would ask that we receive that information here, and I'm following up on what I asked for relative to the fees at the landfill, so that we know what we're approving. I mean, this is great, I understand your argument, and having not adjusted it since '09 is probably needed. But what's the fiscal impact? We need to know that. If you could follow up with us on that, that would be great. I also note that you are retiring from Douglas County and moving to Pennsylvania. We are sorry to see you go. I just wanted to note that I found your service to us to be excellent, and your reports enlightening. Thank you for your service. The community is poor for your loss. So, good luck in Pennsylvania, and thanks for everything you've done here.
Well, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I actually have, can't help myself, and I put together a little PowerPoint presentation. So. Oops, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, so, as I mentioned, I wanted to put together a PowerPoint presentation. I thought I can make it real pretty and colorful, and have all kinds of graphs and charts and numbers about all the plaques and the subdivisions and the rezones and the special uses. And I thought, how boring is that? So, instead, I'd like to talk to you a little about, a little bit about, wow, I practiced this and I still can't keep it together. A little bit about Douglas Cook and Douglas County. So, after Washington County, I was lost. I was a ship without a rudder, a planner without a plan. Frankly, I was a mental mess. But within a few days, I had secured part-time jobs, two part-time jobs, and after Kent reached out to me, I had three. It got to the point that I had sticky notes on the back of my front door with the day of the week, the job, and the hours I'd be working that day. And let me tell you, it would have been easy to feel sorry for myself. And there were bad days. But these, these two fellows never, these two fellows never let that happen. Every time I came home, no matter what job or what hour, their eyes were full of joy, and those darn tails were wagging. And how can that not bring a smile to your face? And those amazing doggies, sometimes alone for over 12 hours straight with the rung of the house, never had an accident. So, every day, no matter how I felt, these two boys got at least a two-mile walk. So, when Kent hired me full-time, my life returned to normal. To be able to reopen the brain channels of planning and use my planning knowledge reinvigorated me intellectually. Now, a job is a job, but it's the people you work with and the people that you work for that are a major factor in your happiness. To me, I can have a wonderful weekend, but if I am miserable during the work week, it doesn't matter. Here at Douglas County, the work was challenging, productive, and friendly. In one way, I've come to believe my time here in Douglas County was preordained. My name is Douglas, I work for Douglas County, there's a Douglas Street, and wouldn't you know it, there's a Douglas Conference Room in the Fitz home. The county has a remarkable planning commission. I have appreciated their dedication and volunteer service to the citizens. And you commissioners have been very supportive in our interaction. It hasn't been all rainbows and unicorns, as we may not have always agreed. But I value that we agree to disagree, and more importantly, maintain a professional and positive working relationship. As Alfie and I moved to Slippery Rock, Pennsylvania, there it is, to be closer to my mom, my 94, going on 60-year-old mother, four siblings, and lots of extended family. I do it with only good feelings about the last 40 years I've lived in the Midwest and the 30 of them here in Nebraska. I look forward to continuing my support of the Huskers, the Blue Jays, and my dear beloved hockey Mavs. I'm stocking up on red apparel, which definitely will stand out among the Pittsburgh black and gold. As Mr. Spock says, "Live long and prosper." And on the lighter side, I will tell you how much I'm going to miss saying this. Douglas County Planning, this is Doug. My sincerest thanks to Kent and staff, the planning commission, the citizens of Douglas County, and you, the county board, for rescuing me from a very dark time in my life and into the best eight years of my life. God bless us all. Thank you.
Well, we will be, when we get done, we're technically still on a public hearing here.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, I've never, I've never had quite this kind of story.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair.
Quite all right, quite all right. Otherwise, there would have been nothing said during the public hearing, so.
No, no.
So, let me ask first off, is there anybody that would like to address the issue that we are considering here of the new building permit fee scheduled during this public hearing? This is the opportunity to do so.
Waste Management 3306 Burt Street. I actually am looking for information, Doug said that there's a difference between Omaha and the rest of the localities that he presented that made it so low. If you could go back to that, I'd appreciate it.
I can tell you that Omaha uses.
Doug, come up to the microphone, please, so everybody can hear you.
I am pretty sure, and I will verify this, that, like, when we use evaluation, we're 75 proposing to go to 83. Omaha uses, as I recall, $52 a square foot.
Okay.
So, that is why their number looks low when it comes to the fee.
All right, thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to address the issue before us during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion to approve the new building permit fee schedule. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments to the motion? Did you have something you wanted to add, Kent? All right. Then, could we please vote?
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Doug, I want to give one final comment here to you outside of the public hearing. I had no idea, I mean, I remember when you were with Washington County, when we were doing our joint stormwater plan, you were up there, and next thing I know, you're working for us, and I thought it was, you know, we got lucky. I had no idea what was going on on your side of the equation. But I know that from the county's perspective, we have been lucky to have you for these years, and we truly appreciate everything you have done to help us run a very good department. So, I want to thank you for what you have given to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I found all of your work so professional and complete, and sometimes I've had questions, and you seem to have anticipated them perfectly. I just really deeply respect you, you're a very talented person, and with a terrific personality, you're just heaven-sent, just a great guy. Thanks, good luck in PA. It's Slippery Rock, oh my God, I love it. Slippery Rock. My father-in-law, Sam Howell, used to talk about Slippery Rock all the time, you know, so. I don't know if he was there or not, but he talked a lot about it.
Well, guess what? You all now, if you're in Western Pennsylvania, you have a place to visit.
Very good.
And let me tell you, not far down the road is the Flight 93 Memorial. And if you have never been there, you have got to go.
Oh, wow.
It is just amazing.
That's great.
Interesting.
So, keep that in mind, because now you have a friend in Slippery Rock.
All right.
It's a small enough town, just pull up on me.
Where's Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Doug, what are you going to do in Pennsylvania? Who are you going to, or have you not found that out yet?
Well, I'm probably going to wear out my mom and brothers and sisters. In fact, I just talked to my mom the other day and told her that it's getting closer, and she said, "Oh, I am so excited to have my number-one son come, my number-one son come and visit me every week for dinner." And I let the phone get quiet, and I said, "Mom, what do you mean, once a week? I'm going to be there every other day." So, but Commissioner Borgerson, what I would like to do, I, I've debated, do I automatically go into my comfort zone and start attending government meetings, you know, the town council and all that kind of stuff? Or what I really would like to do is go out of the box, and I believe that there, well, I know, there's a need for people to be like a caretaker. And I would very much enjoy going in and sitting in someone's home and watching their parent or whatever for a few hours, maybe watch TV, maybe read, maybe just talk. I would really enjoy that. So, I'm definitely looking at that type of thing.
That's wonderful.
But it's going to be different.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be different.
Well, best of luck to you, and again, thank you for your service here to Douglas County.
I did say to my family, I said, "Listen, are you sure you want me to sell my house in Blair? Maybe I should rent it, and if things don't work out, you can ship me back here."
Commissioners Kent Holm, Environmental Service Director. I'd be remiss if I didn't add a few comments about Doug. We're going to miss him. He has done a tremendous job in the years that he's been here. I guess one of the things that I've always joked about him is, I said, you know, "Doug, you can't leave until the comp plan is updated, the zoning regulations are updated, and we make some progress and make sure we're covering costs on fees and so on." So, as an aside, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I have the information from Waste Management on that information. You'll have that later today. And we will get the information that Commissioner Borgerson, that you both asked for, to show that full accounting of how we arrived at those figures. But back to Doug, I mean, he's accomplished a lot of heavy lifting in the last few years, and we really appreciate that. The zoning, planning and zoning in the county, I think, is in a very good place. We've got several other things on the table, but he has really kind of set that table and set us up for success going forward. And so, I really appreciate his efforts in doing all of that. It's allowed the department to move forward, to do some different things, to look at some of the new technology things, moving towards more online permits and various types of things. And Doug has had a hand in really making some of those things, and getting us to the point where we can do some of those things. So, yeah, I'm going to miss him. Every once in a while, I know I had to talk him off the ledge when maybe his good planning sense and said, "Oh, this is a great recommendation," and that, and then kind of hits the political reality, and it kind of hits some of the other reality, and, "Okay, Doug, we're going to be good, and the sun will come up tomorrow, and we'll be good." But, and Doug and I can both smile about some of those times, but anyway. But, and Doug and I can both smile about some of those times, but anyway, we're going to miss Doug. We have hired a, a new, a new replacement for Doug, and Dave Forrest, who was the former Ralston City Administrator, I may have, and he was in that position for a few years. He is, he started last, last week, and Doug's going to be working with him, kind of training on a, on a part-time basis here for, for probably another week or two before we let Doug go. And we are contemplating maybe keeping Doug on a little bit of a leash, and I may have something back in front of you for a, kind of a consulting contract-type thing, just if we need to reach out to Doug to, to kind of keep, keep some of that expertise going. So we're still kind of trying, maybe trying to work, work that out a little bit. But again, Doug, can't thank you enough. You, you've made my life a lot easier. Really appreciate your expertise and the, and the planning and zoning expertise that you brought to us, so thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Very good. Thanks, Rick.
I have a question for Doug. When you, when you call Ralphie, does Alfie come by accident?
It's interesting you say that, because that's the reason I picked that name, those names. I figured that when I would call one, they both would come. Well, let me tell you, that worked sometimes. So Ralphie passed away unfortunately about a year and a half ago, but Alfie is still going strong.
Great.
He is an amazing dog. He is 14.
Wow.
Yeah. I'd be lost without him.
When I, when I was growing up, my sister's best friend was one of the Moylins, you know, Jim Moylan and that whole clan. Her sister was, her name was Ann, and they lived over on California Street, a block from the Cathedral Church, you know, and it was so close, it was all Catholics and everything, all that sort of stuff. Well, Ann would look for the dog, and she'd be running over by the church, and the dog's name was Dammit.
Was what?
Dammit. Dammit? Dammit? So here's Ann, you know, 10 or 11 years old, running over around by the cathedral yelling, you know, "Dammit, dammit, dammit." And of course, with her luck, the Monsignor walked out about that time, and she really got a royal chewy, and she just couldn't explain the dog's name was Dammit. Anyway, it brought to mind.
That's hilarious.
So you, you've done a terrific job for us, you really have, and, and I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing, it just really makes great sense, and we're really happy for you, because you're just, you really represent, and I say this on occasion, but you really represent, and your department really represents such a well-run, run cog in county government. And not only that, but you just represent what county government and what employees are all about. They're really the, the great employees that make this place so, such a good place to live. And so that's, that's really, you're an important part of it, and we'll always think of, of you when we think about zoning and flooding and things like that.
Very good.
But Doug, we really wish you a lot of happiness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just actually want to kind of piggyback off what Commissioner Boyle started to say, because with, when Sheriff Dunning was up here, and now you're up here, and you're echoing a lot of the same sentiments about what Douglas County is all about and the service to the citizens of Douglas County and how you feel about that. And all too often, in this big wave of, you know, everything anti-government going on, I think sometimes we forget the people who are actually doing the work are the ones who are important. And through all the, your years, but especially this last trying year with the COVID pandemic, I can't tell you how impressed I've been with our Douglas County staff continuing to serve the citizens the way that they serve them. And you just brought that to light, Doug, with your wonderful PowerPoint and your words, but as you were saying that, I thought back about Sheriff Dunning being up here, and he too feels the same way. And so I, again, in all of this upheaval that we're in, and this negativity and nastiness and ugliness and fighting, and I just want to remind folks that we have good, good people in Douglas County serving their needs every single day that they don't see, but you are. I mean, we talked about hidden heroes and caregivers. You guys are our heroes in continuing to serve the citizens of Douglas County, and so thank you for reminding us of that.
Okay, I'll come around if I may.
Come on around. Come on down. The Price is Right.
I have no idea what it's going on.
I'll walk around. I'd like to give you a piece of pie. Mr. Boyle, it's been a pleasure. I enjoy your banter. You're a great man. Thanks. Look at Mr. Craft. Yep. Yep. Occasionally, we do go through that.
Do you?
Yeah, I've taken many trips.
Did you wish to speak, Mark?
No, I thought I heard somebody say my name.
They did, but it was kind of an accident.
That's a very beautiful part of the conversation.
So wasn't uttered profane.
No, 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 not this time.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Craft, yes.
Yes, and thank you very much for your service. You've done a wonderful job, and it's in areas that are very much needed. And something tells me you're not going to remain idle when you get to your parents' house and your parents' community.
Indeed.
Thank you.
I'm not sure Slippery Rock knows what they're in for.
That's what I was thinking. Radical transformation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not aware of anything else on the agenda in terms of open meeting legislative issues. Is there anything anybody would like to?
We have our first meeting on legislative issues, and Marcos will be finishing up the, the edits of that, and we'll be bringing that to the board. But again, we still have, if you have anything else that you want us to talk about or take a look at, that's fine. Joe will be testifying on the inheritance tax, or during the inheritance tax hearing, and that's all for right now.
All right. Commissioner Boyle.
A flat tire, Elsie had a flat tire. I used my AAA to get it repaired this morning. It was an emergency call, and I, I didn't realize that. I thought I would get here in time, but Sheriff Dunning was here.
Yes.
And did he retire officially?
Yes.
And did we vote on the appointment?
Correct.
Okay, well, I really apologize for missing that. It was not, I'm sure he'll, we've had kind of a, at times, a stormy relationship.
You've got a long relationship with him.
Yes, we do. But anyway, he's, he's done a great job, and I really apologize for, for that. I was hoping I'd be here, but I want the record to reflect that I, I do vote for Tom Wheeler, and I, I've got a lot of calls about Captain Hudson and so forth, and that's Mr. Sheriff Wheeler's position now to do that. And I apologize to Tim for not being here. I was looking forward to his banter. He has a wonderful sense of humor, and he's a wonderful guy, has a terrific family, and I wish him the best of luck and a lot of happiness, and I'd like that to be on the record, and I'd like, if there was a resolution, I'd like to reflect that I voted yes, not even knowing what it said, but I think it was probably appropriate. So anyway, I, I apologize for not, for being here of all the times to be late. That's not good, but anyway, thank you.
The sheriff asked if we could move him up on the agenda. There were a number of people here present for that, and he saw you weren't here and said, could we maybe get this done?
All right.
Okay.
I had that coming.
Anything else for the good of the cause while we are in open session? We have great need of executive session, and I hope I remember them all. It is legis, let's see, litigation, negotiations, and legal advice?
Personnel.
Personnel, personnel, that was it.
I move we go into executive session for those reasons.
We will be today having our executive session up on 9:03. We have some additional guests that will be joining us for part of the meeting, and so we want to be in a larger place. So this executive session will be up in 9:03. So again, this is for negotiations, litigation, and personnel. We had the motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Could we please vote on that going into executive session? As usual, when we come out of executive session, the only action we will be taking this week will be adjournment.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Thank you all.